For twenty January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. It is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID- nineteen pandemic until April first, twenty twenty-two. The hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx platform, and it is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this meeting of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through teleph- through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers from members of the public who are most impacted by the project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, first click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click that icon, and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, press star three to raise your hand if you are connected by telephone. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. And just a reminder, so that we start off the new year on a right footing, if somebody has already stated your concern, either your concern or your reason for support, make sure you put your name and address on the record, and just state that you're in support and that somebody else has already stated the concern, your concern or reason for support. This is important to us, because we want to make sure we give as many people a chance to speak, but please use your time to give us new information. For the attorneys out there, please spend your time telling us about the project. The mayor's office of neighborhood services and the representatives of elected officials will talk through the process. So please focus your comments on describing the project, so that we have a high level of comprehension about what is being proposed. Also, once anybody makes their comments, please lower your hand. So, good morning, board members. Let me do a quick roll call before I pass it over to Mr. Fortune. Mister, I see Mr. Fortune there. Good morning, happy-
Morning, Madam Chair, Happy New Year.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Morning, Happy New Year.
Morning, Happy Year, Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Chair, Happy New Year.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Mr. Rogiro will be on, and when he is on, we will be notified. Mr. Robinson?
Good morning, Happy New Year.
Good morning, Happy New Year to you too. Mr. Ligris?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Happy New Year.
Good morning. Mr. Hampton?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Happy New Year.
Good morning, and Happy New Year to you too. So, just for the, for a note for right now, we are running as a six-member board, but we are expecting Mr. Rogiro on momentarily. Mr. Fortune?
Madam Chair, the first order of business, the approval of the hearing minutes is December fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, on the extensions, I'm going to call the address in and then the applicant if they're here, and then I'll read what we have for tolling, tolling on that. Okay, so, calling the first case for extension, calling BOA nine-four-three-seven-one-one-fifty-nine, Gov Street. Name an address for the record, please.
He's here, Tom. I just made him a panelist. David, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Name an address for the record, please.
Oh, David Tellerigo, four sixteen A Cambridge Street, Winchester, Massachusetts.
All right, thank you, sir. This is regarding fifty-nine Gov Street. The board originally granted this relief on January thirty-first of two thousand twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for extension. The relief would normally expire on July, on January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is May eighth of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire, does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return then to request their first extension if necessary.
Don't move.
May I have Mr. Ligris help us on this one?
Sure, Madam Chair. Motion to confirm that relief is valid through May eighth, twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Calling two cases, calling BOA one-zero-one-eight-three-four-seven-thirty-six to forty Sprague Street. There's companion case BOA one-zero-one-eight-three-five-zero-thirty-eight to forty Sprague Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Happy New Year, everybody. Attorney John Pulgeni, Ken Forbes Road, Ranford, Massachusetts.
Thank you. This is regarding thirty-six forty and thirty-eight forty Sprague Street. The board originally granted these companion cases on April thirtieth of two thousand twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension, because the board granted this relief after the beginning of the COVID state of emergency on March tenth of two thousand twenty. Tolling does not apply to this relief. The relief expires on April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. If the board concludes that an extension is warranted in this matter, I recommend confirming that tolling is not applicable here and granting the applicant an additional year to complete their project in the normal practice of the board.
Do we want to hear from the applicant with respect to a request for the extension? Because there is no tolling here.
Let's go ahead.
Mr. Pulgeni?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Ligris. Good, good morning, board. John Pulgeni, on behalf of the applicant. So this is a larger project located in between on the border of Reedville and Dedham, Massachusetts, and the applicant has gone through, they're in the process of doing construction drawings, and for finance purposes, they'll need an extension to complete their construction documents and other testing, and get everything in by his day. And COVID was the reason that kind of set things back a little bit.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please? For extension till four-thirty-twenty-three?
Yep, so motion to extend and confirm that tolling doesn't, motion to confirm that tolling does not apply to either of these properties, and motion to extend through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Rogiro is on.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. Rogiro. Good morning.
Going to call the next case for extension, calling BOA eight-seven-five-five-eight-seven-twenty-five Bentley Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning and Happy New Year, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckel, Lucirego and Toscano, with the business address of eleven Beacon Street here in Boston, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. This is twenty-five Bentley Street. The board originally granted this relief on January thirty-first of two thousand twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for extension. The relief would normally expire on January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is May eighth of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return, then request their first extension if necessary.
Motion to confirm that relief is valid through May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-eight-five-four-eight-nine-eight-five Field Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Doug Wan, are you on?
Yes, hello, good morning, Happy New Year.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Douglas, I'm architect for the address eight-five Field Street.
Thank you. The board originally granted this relief on February seventh of two thousand twenty, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally expire on February seventh of two thousand twenty-two. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is May fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the, for the record that this relief does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return then request their first extension if necessary.
Motion to confirm that relief is valid through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-seven-nine-five-three-six-three-forty-six-to-three-forty-eight West Broadway. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you. This regards to three forty-six, three forty-eight West Broadway. The board originally granted this relief on November first of two thousand nineteen, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally have expired on November first of two thousand twenty-one. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is February sixth of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return then request their first extension if necessary.
Motion to confirm that relief is valid through February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-seven-five-one-three-three-four-eleven East Third Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you. Regarding four-eleven East Third, the board originally granted this relief on December twentieth of two thousand nineteen, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. The relief would normally have expired on December twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is March twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend the board confirm that the record, the relief does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return then request their first extension if necessary.
Motion to confirm that relief is valid through March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA six-six-three-seven-one-zero-forty-three-Lockdale Road. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you. This is forty-three Lockdale Road. The board originally granted this relief on November twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, so this is the applicant's first request for extension. The relief would normally have expired on November twenty-second of two thousand twenty-one. However, tolling applies to this project, so the relief remains valid. With tolling, the new expiration date of the relief is February twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that this relief does not expire until that date, and that the applicant may return then request their first extension if necessary.
Motion to confirm that relief is valid through February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we start our nine-thirty hearings, we do have a full, a full member board, so we can proceed without any issues.
I need deferrals and withdrawals for nine-thirty only. If you could give me the address for us, please.
Morning, morning, this is True Lead Better, address eleven-eighty-seven Blue Hill Avenue. We'd like to postpone.
All right, thank you. Calling case BOA one-two-five-nine-four-nine-nine, eleven-eighty-seven to eleven-ninety-five Blue Hill Avenue. Name an address for the record, please.
True Lead Better, address, business address thirty-one Standard Street, Madam Pan, Mass.
Okay, tell us the reason for the, for the request for deferral.
So we are having some issues with the property, and we're not sure we're going to be moving forward with this location anymore, so we need to defer until we can sort that out.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Well, we have dates in February into March, though. We can do February fifteenth.
Okay.
February fifteenth, thank you.
February fifteenth to twelve-thirty.
Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, so we're all scheduled since February fifteenth.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty only?
Secretary, eighteen-dish-twenty Parkman Street?
Thank you. Hold on two seconds, we'll find this. Parkman Street? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct, eighteen to twenty Parkman.
Thank you. Calling BOA one-two-six-eight-nine-zero-three, eighteen to twenty Parkman Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, we'd like to request a deferral in order to complete community process. This is an address that is on the periphery of both the Fields Corner Civic Association and the Saint Marks Area Civic Association. Fields Corner has, in fact, voted on this. Saint Marks has not. While it's not technically within their jurisdiction, they have membership in the area. They have asked us to present to the Saint Marks Board on February twenty-second, and my clients would like to honor that request and request a deferral today.
May I have a se-, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Mr. Maranci, did you say February twenty-second or January twenty-second?
Yes, we need to present on February twenty-second, so we'd have to kick this into March.
So, yeah, you'll have a date of March twenty-second at twelve-thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty only?
Yes, twenty and twenty-two Gaylord Street, two separate BOAs.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA one-two-seven-one-four-zero-eight-twenty Gaylord Street. There is companion case BOA one-two-seven-one-four-one-one-twenty-two Gaylord Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Andrew Litchfield, fourteenth Old Mill Road, Norfolk, Mass.
So tell us why you're asking for a deferral?
Yes, I'm requesting a deferral because the updated refusal letter was not received in time, and the city needs time to re-advertise the ZB A date.
So you've changed your plans, then? Adjusted your plans? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll have a date of February fifteenth at twelve-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty only? Hearing now, I'll call the first case. Calling BOA one-one-three-three-four-nine-five-one-seventy-four Lexington Street. This is a change of argument from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-three, Section eight, Youth and Regulations, Article three, Section fifty-six, off-screen parking and loading. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the additional lot areas insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Name is David Choi, architect, representing the applicant, Mr. Marvel Martinez.
Okay, so please tell us how is that fourth unit going to be accommodated, and how many square feet is it proposed to be?
The proposal is to add one thousand five hundred square feet of living space to the lower level. The lower level is exposed on the Lexington Street side, as you could see. This is, this site is a very unique condition in that there is a deep front lawn of this, of property that is immediately adjacent on the left side, allowing for natural light to come in, and the owner applicant would like to take advantage of this unique condition for, for having a, basically a lower-level unit. The ceiling height will be seven foot six. It is seven foot six currently.
Okay, what's, so it's a thousand five hundred square-foot unit? Tell us about how the, how the, it's going to work? Tell us the floor to sill height, and how the second means of egress is going to work?
The window sill would be forty-four inches at the maximum. The egress window sill that you see on the bedroom on the left side of the plan, we are, we could actually achieve that at twenty-four inches, because the site is so much lower on that side. The bedroom in the back, there is a lawn in the back, and we are planning to install a, there is an existing egress window, but we're trying to make that into a legalized egress sill of forty-four inches. Again, the height of the ceiling is seven foot six inches as measured currently, and the second means of egress, there is currently a, an existing stair to the first floor, which will allow the occupant to go to the rear of the site and to egress out on the left side of the building.
Please confirm that I'm reading the plans correctly. So it appears that the only windows are proposed for the two bedrooms, and there is no light in the dining area or any place else in the proposed unit?
The, the plan is cut at, unfortunately, thirty-six inches, and therefore, the window at the kitchen will be, will be higher. There will be a, a window that is set high, higher than the egress windows, and apologize for not indicating that on, on the plan. And I believe the, the dining, we could, we do have an ability to create a, a transit window in that, in that area.
Okay, and so, let's see, so there are a number of additional violations. Can you tell me what makes this project special, or this, this, this thing special, that we should be changing the occupancy? Because it looks to me that this already has a, a high use.
Thank you for that question. If, if, if we could go to the top of this sheet, I just want to focus on the way that, if you look at the photograph, the reason why I included this photograph is to show, if you scroll to the top of the page, you could see that the, the lower level is actually quite, much lower than the, the first floor. There's a stair that leads to the first floor, and there is a, quite a bit of setback on the property on the left, which will allow for natural light into, into this lower-level unit. It's a very unique condition, because in East Boston, you would see a lot of triple-deckers that are side by side, and I understand that the board does not look favorably upon creating a dungeon-like space, and so this, this is a unique condition in that there is an exposed side, and we would, we would like to take as much advantage of that, and I, we do believe that it is an owner, it will be an owner-occupied unit.
So are these, are these existing condos?
I believe they're rentals, they're, they're owner, it's owner-occupied.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans certainly indicate the scope. I, I'm not quite sure, because there is, there really is no adjacent grading information. I'm struggling a little bit with understanding the grades to window to basement here, because as I see it in this photo, is a good moment to look at it. You can see on the bottom left, there seems to be a common access door to the utilities, which I understand, and then the windows directly shown next to that, but adjacent to that are stairs up. So I'm, I'm not sure even the bedroom window that's called out on the lower-level plan is, is going to get to the natural light, Mr. Choi. Can you confirm that? Because it's a little hard to tell on the drawings. Looks like the stairs up where the grade starts to rise is closer to the front of the house than that proposed new window.
Actually, if you go to the, the plan that is to the immediate left of this same page, the window will be actually installed forty-four inches, and we will have to move the stair to the back in order for that to work.
And so how wide is that passageway, then? It looks like, what, what is the dimension of that passageway?
I believe it's, it's two-point-eight feet, which I believe is thirty-two inches.
So it's thirty-two inches from the wall to the property line, from the building wall to the property line?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Robinson, any other questions?
Just the question of access. So this unit, if it's approved, will be accessed through the rear? Is that correct? So you'll go, you'll walk by the building, find the rear deck, and then you'll find the stairs down? Is that correct?
This unit will be accessed from the front, which, which is on Lexington Street side. As you can see on the photo, it's, it's at a much lower level, and it will be primarily entered in from the front.
Madam Ambassador, can you go to the, the plan?
Can you, can we identify, can the architect for the applicant identify which, which, is this the right, right, right?
I don't see the access stair from the front, and I see the common area stair, but that is a low door, you know, is that what you're saying is the entry point to that unit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. Mr. Choi, are there any elevations that you have that can clarify this issue about the relationship of the unit to grade?
I did not provide that in the submission.
Okay, that's certainly a problem for me to support this. The utilities are in that little space... What, common utilities? That's what will be for all four units, is that right?
Yes, it will be...
So you walk down into that common area, then you can go straight ahead into the utility room, or you can go into this new unit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Madam Chair, I have to say, in the absence of elevations, it's... I don't feel there's enough information for us to make an intelligent and useful decision.
Okay. Let's go. Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. We have some background information on the community process conducted by our colleague. She indicated that they received support from the Butters and the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Ms. Ambassador?
Do you have one raised hand? Let me just see if it's for this case. Caller 617959, are you here to give testimony on this proposal? I've sent a request to unmedia. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, now that we understand or partially understand the technicalities of this, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a... I just think it's... There's not enough information here to weigh in. I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Can I make an amendment without prejudice? Just in case you can get information and come back?
Yes, Mr. Rogério. Yeah, that's fine. I think we just don't have enough information to really weigh in on this.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 113349793 Falcon Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. Construct a new third-story addition and third-dwelling unit. The violation is Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston I Part. Article 53, Section 56, O Street Parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, Three-Family Dwelling Use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 52, Roof Structure Restriction. Article 53, Section 9, The Floor-to-Ear Ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, The Building Height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, The Side Yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, The Rear Yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Name is David Choi, architect, representing Mr. Wee, the owner of the property.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed?
We're proposing to add a third floor to this existing two-story structure. And that is the... The idea is to have a typical three-level townhouse structure that is very commonly seen in East Boston. And the idea was to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. We are not proposing to add a unit to the basement. Instead, we are going to add the third level. This will be, again, owner-occupied.
Okay, so tell us about the proposed... About the proposed size of the proposed third unit?
We're proposing to add approximately 1,400 square feet of addition to the third level in the existing egress, two means of egress that is there.
Okay, and every... All units will be accessed through that front door?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there a roof deck proposed?
We did not add the roof deck in the elevation. That was not something that the neighborhood wanted to see exceed the height of 35 feet.
Okay, and this is a proposed four-bedroom unit? Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions. I think the scale is consistent with the street. I don't have an issue with this proposal. The question I had for the proponent is, there is a bulkhead shown on the back? I guess if there's no roof deck, do you need the bulkhead? Or obviously, the board is sort of not excited about bulkheads either. So is that something that is... Can be removed?
Yes, sir. If it pleases the board and Madam Chair, we will certainly remove that and not have access to the roof. The deck was actually removed, but not the bulkhead, so that could certainly be removed.
No other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. We have some background information on the community process. As the applicant mentioned, there were some initial concerns regarding the height, and it was initially voted down at the Civic Association. After that, changes were made based on the feedback from the community. The proposed height was reduced as well as the roof deck. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, Jeff, did the BPD have comments on this?
Yes, we recommended approval with proviso on this one, Madam Chair. Right? Is this Falcon Street?
It is.
It is. Sorry about that. Yeah, just with special attention to the corners and the materials for the third floor.
So you're recommending approval with design review?
Yes, ma'am.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPD design review and the removal of the bulkhead.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 127045146 High Street. There is a companion case, BOA 127045646R High Street. This is for 46 High. This is in conjunction with 46R High. Two buildings on the same lot. Violation is Article 62, Section 19. This is in the Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Article 62, Section 30.13, Two or more buildings on one lot. Article 62, Section 62-30-12, The dwelling should not be built to the rear of another dwelling. Article 62, Section 8, The rear yard is insufficient. This is for 46R High Street, Directing Three-Story, Three-Family Dwelling. Violation is Article 62, Section 8, Dimensional Regulations. Article 62, Section 19, The Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Article 62-30-13, Two or more buildings on one lot. Article 62, Section 62-30-12, The dwelling shall be built to the rear of another dwelling. And Article 62, Section 62.8, The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Tony Derrick Small. I have a business address of 51 Dobson Road, Greenwich, Mass. With me today on the call is the architect, Linda Nishamkin. You can go over the plans as well. Today, we're here seeking relief to erect a three-family dwelling here of an existing building, six parking spaces. Zoning sub-district is a 3F2,000. Our lot size is 9,021 square feet. And the violations are as follows. Rear yard setback requirement is 20 feet. We have five feet nine inches in the rear. Main entrance for two units on one side. As Linda will point out, the main entrance for the first unit is facing High Street. The other two are facing into the passageway and courtyard. And it is an overlay district. Madam Chair, the units will consist of three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and they are approximately 2,400 square feet. And for the record, we are not cited for FAR, but the required FAR is 2.0. The existing FAR is 0.59, and we are proposing 1.3, which keeps us below the required FAR. I'll turn it over to Linda now, and she can go through the law.
Before you go any further, Counselor, can you tell us what is in the existing 46 High Street building? Is that a one, two, or three family?
There are five units in the existing 46 High Street.
There are five units, and you're proposing adding three more so that on a 9,000-square-foot lot, you will have eight units? And this is a 3F2,000? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, and can you tell us something about the existing building? What's the size of the general range of sizes and bedrooms of those units?
Yes, there are two bedrooms, and most of the units are between 1,000 and 2,000.
And sorry, 1,000 and what?
2,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Nishamkin, can you please go ahead with your brief presentation?
Yes, thank you. This is a very large lot, as you could see from the site plan review. And we are proposing building in the back of the lot where there is quite a drop-off of the hill. And our setbacks are exceeding the setbacks in the 3F2,000 zone. We are 11... Over 11 feet from the side property line to the right, as you're looking at the plan, and over five feet from the opposite side of the property line. If it would be possible to scroll back to the beginning of this, it would be helpful, but I don't know if that's...
If it's possible.
Possible.
Tell us specifically.
There we go. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Which... Is this the correct drawing?
That's great. Okay, so if you could... Yes, that's the correct drawing. Thank you very much. That gives you a view of the setbacks. There are three townhouses, and they are facing Green Street, as you can see. Each of them has their own backyard with... Their second means of egress is through their backyard and a long passageway that takes you either out to High Street at the front or back to a 30-foot-wide common passageway at the rear. All parking for this project will be under the building, taking advantage of the difference in slope from the front to the back, which is approximately 14 feet height difference, so that there will be no parking taken up on the street and no loss of parking spaces.
And may I just ask you? So if I was in a vehicle, I would come off of High Street, drive down that driveway and go directly into parking spots?
No, 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 no. If you were in a vehicle, you would be driving down Green Street, which is the street that's perpendicular to High. And if you just... If somebody could scroll that drawing up a little bit, you'll see the passageway.
I see. Okay.
Okay, there you go. So you're driving in the passageway and under the building. So we have complete parking under the building. There's six parking spaces. If you could scroll further.
Can I just have one question? Is that passageway in joint ownership? Tell us about that passageway.
Yes, it is. It is in joint ownership, accessed by the immediate of Butters. And those immediate of Butters are the Abraham Lincoln Post, which is otherwise called Memorial Hall, which is right to the left of our site. And the First Church of Charlestown, which is on the opposite side of the passageway, by our lot 46, and by the lot next door at 44 High. I believe those are all of the Butters.
And are there roof decks proposed?
There is a roof deck proposed, yes. And you will see that... If we could scroll further down, we will see that. This is the parking level that you're seeing. First floor level. This is the... Yeah, the six parking spaces within that. Here's the first floor level, second, which is two bedrooms on each, third floor, which is a master bedroom and study. Above that, we have a roof deck. That roof deck also will enclose the air handler... I'm sorry, the condensers for the three units. If we scroll further on, you will see there the... Roof decks are totally enclosed on all sides, so that we're not actually looking through open railings there.
And how is the roof... How are the roof decks accessed?
Each roof deck is an individually roof deck accessed by the individual townhouse.
It's hatch, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Hatch access.
Thank you. Okay.
No, it's ours officially, sir.
Yes, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
I mean, I think the plans are representational of the proposal. I do have a question. On 46 High Street, there is a survey site plan that shows a much different footprint? Can you explain what that?
That appears to be an error, frankly, in the...
Because it appears to be a properly scaled building back there, to be honest. It's a much smaller footprint, and I guess I'm trying to understand if that's an old version. If you scroll to the next page, I think you'll see a different footprint on... Now, maybe it's in the other file. There's two files.
Yeah, in the other... It looks like in the other file, there was some sort of an error, because that was an earlier version. And that earlier version was reviewed in some detail with the community, both the Butters and the Preservation Society. And the first proposal had been a two-unit but four-store... I'm sorry. Sorry, excuse me. I didn't mean to say that. A four-unit and four-story building. So although it was further back on the site, it was much closer to the two property lines. On the side of building number 44, it was three feet away from the property line. And we're now 11 feet away from the property line.
And can you just explain to me? Because it's a little hard to tell. The building to the right-hand side of the property, it also has a very long extension that seems to run the same. What is that building?
That building is interesting in that the front portion of it is a complete mirror image of the original brick bow front. And attached to it are a series of townhouses that come up about between two and a half and three feet from the property line, the side property line. And that, I believe, was developed in the 80s. I had...
It's a residential is all my question.
It's residential.
It was residential.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, I think it's probably pretty clear, at least from my opinion. And this just feels like it's being wedged into the back very tight on all sides, but I'll look forward to additional questions from the board.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, well, several questions. Why, Mr. Small, why was there a choice made to put two buildings on one lot, which, as you know, is not something this board is very keen on, as opposed to subdividing the lot?
Yeah. I think the front and the rear properties will be in common ownership, and I think that when we were at ISD, they were told, the applicant at the time was told, that you could go back and subdivide later if necessary. If that's something that the board would desire, we would just open a proviso that we subdivide. That's not a...
Okay, I'm not suggesting that that's what happened, because then you've got, what, a 9,000-square-foot lot with eight units? I mean, you're already... It's a very, very dense situation, so I don't think subdividing is necessarily the solution.
I'd like to point out, the front units are being converted. There's going to be a gut rehab of that, and it's going to be going from five units to three units. I know Ms. Aragio did ask what is currently there. Current occupancy of the front building is five units, but in the gut rehab of that property as well, we are reducing that.
Okay, so the total would be...
So the total will be six units on that lot.
All right, and it still strikes me as being quite dense, but anyway, thank you. Those are my questions.
Question, was there any exploration? Um, question, um, was there any exploration, in other words, to give breathing room? Because it does feel that, um, it is kind of wedged in there to a smaller, a smaller building, uh, maybe two units, some other option?
Um, it, it was discussed very briefly, um, uh, because the, the property, as Lucas said, adjacent to ours has townhouses very similar on the other side, uh, we were just trying to mirror some of the stuff that was, that was already in the, the area on the other side.
Okay, thank you, um, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Um, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dionne Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, our office held two abutters meetings for this proposal, the first meeting was on September second, twenty twenty. Um, following this abutters meeting, um, the applicant took in the concerns and requests of the neighbors and completely revised the plans. A second meeting was held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, where the plans were presented, um, along with a shadow study that was requested by the neighbors. Um, he also met with the applicants individually, I mean, the abutters individually at the property. Um, after the second abutters meeting, I received no opposition, but our office did receive seventy elec-, seventy signatures of support and a letter of support from the Charlestown Preservation Society. Um, at this time, we defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters, uh, that, uh, the Mayor's Office spoke of, but we also have one letter of opposition.
And Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand, um, I'll open it up to Stephen. Go ahead, you can unmute yourself.
For your time today, um, I'm here with Councilor Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy, apologize for not being present during, to our meeting running late, but Councilor Murphy is in support of this project on High Street and want, wanted her staff to be present to voice her support, thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. Have no additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, the BPDA recommended denial without prejudice on this. A lot of our feelings on this proposed project have already been expressed by the board, uh, in terms of massing, try and wedge in another, uh, three units to, uh, onto this lot. One of the other issues that we had, the passageway, if you look now, even if you go out to the site, there are people parking in that passageway. I know there are signs that say no parking, uh, but the, you know, the access to the underground parking seemed to be an issue as well. Um, and I don't know, you know, if this is something where we put a proviso, where we subdivide the parcel, is this going to create more ZDA hearings? Because now you're throwing these buildings possibly into violation to the filling of its. So, we would have liked to have seen the subdivision plan go forward at the same time as this. Um, I just, I, I hate to see this come back again before you, just because now they're gonna subdivide. But we recommend it denial without prejudice.
Thank you. Case, given of, yes, uh, Mr. Ha-, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to make note that I know, um, with regard to the BPDA recommendation, um, with regard to some of the stuff they mentioned in the recommendation, we had, um, with the abutters, with regard to the light air issues, obviously, it was mentioned that we did do a, um, light air study, and we were made adjustments in the plans to, um, widen and lengthen the, uh, or drop height, the passageway on the side, um, so that those issues were taken care of.
Thank you.
Prior to, after the recommendation had come out, so we did do stuff to mitigate some of the.
Thank you, thank you, it's counting small. Okay, um, let's just clear the deck, um, and just have a conversation with the board, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, deny without prejudice, I, I just think it's too dense. I think the, the site plan associated with address forty-six that we didn't see with the smaller footprint, to me, makes more sense, um, on the side. I think it's just, it's, it's just filling the site too much, in my opinion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I agree with that, uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose, like, we're supposes.
I oppose.
Okay, uh, there's two oppositions, there's five in support, uh, five in support of the motion, so motion carries for denial without prejudice. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, you guys have a good day, thank you.
You too.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-two-six, four-five-seven-five, four-seventeen to four-twenty-three C, West Broadway. This is a change of ar- occupied basement area from storage to an indoor golf facility with accessory bar and restaurant to include a podcast studio. Then from tenant fit out, the violation, Article sixty-eight, section seven, amusement game simulator or commercial establishment is forbidden. Article sixty-eight, section seven, ente- entertainment recreational use accessory bar or bar is forbidden. Article sixty-eight, section seven, basement accessory restaurant. Article sixty-eight, section seven, production podcast. Article sixty-eight, section eight, excessive FAR, and Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking loading. Name and address on the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Zizula, McDermott, Corey Miller, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. Happy New Year to everybody, uh, with me today is Danny Picard from PIC Entertainment LLC, who is the proponent, and our architect, uh, James Christopher from Roach Christopher Architects. Um, Danny, just a little bit of background, Danny is a local South Boston resident, uh, he grew up in South Boston and still lives in the neighborhood. And what he's seen is an opportunity for a unique hospitality concept, uh, on West Broadway. So he's seeking permission to fit out existing space and establish new legal uses and occupancy in the basement level of the existing building at, at, on West Broadway, four-seventeen to four-twenty-three C. Uh, this is on the corner of West Broadway and F Street, and this would be the CVS building, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this is a long existing commercial building in the neighborhood, and the, and this concept would be located in the basement space that's existing there, um, and is vacant at this time.
So let's, so Mr. Zizula.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Let's cut directly to the chase, okay? What is the square feet of this, the total square feet of this proposed facility? And there are three forbidden uses, so can you please go directly and talk to those? Because I'm interested in what this quote accessory bar and restaurant will look like.
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to do that, so this would be, what he's seeking to open is a Broadway golf club, it's an indoor golf club. It will feature six golf simulators, simulator rooms powered by, you know, top-of-the-line trackman golf equipment. And with that, that's the main portion of this, the space is five thousand square feet. A lot of the space is occupied by that, by those simulators, because you need rooms to swing a golf club. And so a lot of the space is program space, there's also, uh, back of the house and some kitchen space. And the component here, it's just like if you were at a typical outdoor golf course anywhere in the state of Massachusetts, there's almost always a nineteen pole, which is a restaurant and bar where folks who finished playing around the golf can grab a hot dog and a beer and sit and tally up their scorecard or watch the end of the, you know, the game and, uh, and sit with the people they played golf with to kind of unwind after the round. So, that's where the accessory restaurant and bar, uh, comes into play. It's a small component of the overall floor space in the, uh, in the concept, because a lot of it's taken up by that program level space, but it's an important concept, uh, as kind of an accessory use to the overall, uh, idea of this indoor golf club.
And what are the proposed hours of operation?
Yes, ma'am, so if you look, uh, it, we, it was up a previous slide ago, uh, perfect, right here, thank you very much, Madam Ambassador. So you can see here, we listed out a lot of the operations, um, the proposed hours would be eight AM to twelve AM. So, you know, typically golf is, you know, in normal summer hours, it's about six AM to, you know, when the sun goes down at dusk, about eight PM. Uh, you know, this would provide an opportunity for, you know, frankly, people to play golf in South Bos-, in South Boston all year long. Um, not only during the summertime, but also night golf as well, obviously, where it would be indoors. So the hours would be eight AM to twelve, they would, it would be closed well before, you know, any of the other bars or restaurants, um, on West Broadway.
Okay, and then, um, it's, looks like, how are you going to accommodate your off-street parking and loading?
Yes, ma'am, that's a, a, a great question, and one that we've worked on, um, a lot to get to this point, not only internally, but with the neighborhood. Um, you know, this, the, the biggest thing here that will mitigate any parking issue, um, is that this is gonna be entry by tee time only, meaning you need a reservation or an appointment to come play golf, you cannot just show up and walk in the door. And that's gonna mitigate any parking, uh, concerns or issues. We do need zoning relief for the off-street parking insufficient, there's just no available onsite parking, it's an existing commercial building, um, there's no where for us to accommodate the parking. Um, we have looked into a, we have looked into offsite, we have looked into offsite parking, uh, for third parties. Uh, you know, with third parties, we'll continue to look into that, um, but right now, we're not proposing any parking onsite and there's none available. Um, but, you know, again, we would suggest that it's, the operation itself will mitigate any of the, the parking issues, because there's just only so many people who can play golf at one time in six simulators. And a round of golf for four people takes four hours. So there will not be a, a mad dash of folks trying to park at one time or, or, uh, buy spaces in the area.
And tell us about deliveries, because sometimes we see deliveries blocking streets, blocking, uh, uh, hanging over the sidewalk. How a delivery is gonna be accommodated?
Yes, ma'am, ano- another great question, and one that we've worked on with the neighbors quite closely. So this is an existing commercial building, there's again a CVS on the ground floor. All deliveries and trash will be handled through the main building entrance on Broadway, and we are looking to tie into, uh, how the existing tenants, um, do that, so we are not, uh, increasing any burden or any traffic as a result. Again, uh, I also would note that this is, you know, five thousand square feet, but it's a lot of program space and the kitchen and the back of house will be very small. Uh, we don't anticipate a lot of trash in deliveries, but those that will be coming in will be accommodated through the commercial, uh, front door entrance as, as the current tenants do as well.
And a final question, is this going to be handicapped accessible?
Uh, for that, I will, I believe it is, but I will talk, uh, I will be part of James Christopher, who's our architect.
One, members of the board, there'll be two means of accessibility to the building, the primary entrance on West Broadway has a full elevator, uh, which will be able to access the basement, uh, lower level space. And the entrance off of F Street will also accommodate a little lift, uh, so that anyone entering off of F Street will be able to come in and get down to the wall level.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, plans are good, uh, really no questions, the, the, the food serve at, for, sorry, the food service as- aspect is, is quite small. I think it's two hundred and five hundred square feet, so, Mr. Zizula, is it, uh, I'm just counting, so, you know, there's six simulators, I guess you go with maybe a foursome, I don't play golf, so twenty-four people, maybe with some residual, I mean, is this like an occupancy of thirty or something? And plus probably some staff, obviously, but, so fairly low?
Yeah, 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 yes, Mr. Robinson, that's correct, so I mean, most days, the total occupancy for the entire day would be under a hundred people. Because one person accounts for one hour to play a round of golf. When you have a foursome, which is what would be per simulator, that's twon-, that's four hours. And that, so the math comes out to be, if you had four people playing a round of golf for four hours, there's only six possible tee times, that's, uh, that is, uh, twenty-four times four, that's only ninety-six people. So the occupancy at any time would be about thirty, and actually throughout the entire day would be, would be, you know, roughly around a hundred for the golf.
Okay, and then?
Again, it's gonna be very golf-focused, apologies.
Okay, and then the ac- the access point, this is for, uh, Mr. Christopher, so you're utilizing the existing access mainly off of West Broadway, correct? There's a common for the rest of the building tenants, and you're coming in through that?
No, the primary entrance will be on F Street, uh, Mr. Robinson, if you look at, um, A one-on-one. You can see, uh, there's an, in, in the photographs, there's an existing door that we, that must be nicely closed. So we will open that, and then there'll be a, uh, that'll be the primary pedestrian entrance.
Gotcha, okay, so there are, so you are gonna make some exterior upgrades to that F Street side?
Yes, just to the entrance.
Okay, got it. Uh, no further questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Uh, just a couple of questions, uh, uh, what is the current use of the space?
It's, uh, open stock.
It's vacant storage.
Vacant storage, okay, so what, I mean, was there always anticipation of something like this being done?
I don't, I don't believe so, I don't speak for the landlord, Mr. Ehrlich, but I think, you know, this indoor golf simulator is a, the very unique and new concept. Um, I don't think, there, there's several in, in Boston, but not very many, and, and, you know, the technology has caught up so much recently that they're now starting to pop up, I, I don't think they ever planned on having anybody, or at least this type of use in the space.
I hope there are no, uh, simulator golf carts.
I don't, I don't believe so, we can work on that for you if you need one.
All right.
Any other questions, Mr. Ehrlich, you good?
I'm good.
Is anybody, go ahead, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just had a couple, um, what's the seating capacity of the restaurant?
So in the, I, I got a, yeah, uh, in the, uh, kitchen area, there'll be a total of seven seats, um, in the lounge area, there'll be twenty-two seats, including some tables and at the bar. And then, um, in the VIP simulator, there'll be additional, uh, high seats.
Okay, and so you mentioned that the, um, the golf, golf was by appointment only, so are, are the only guests utilizing the restaurant, bar, VIP lounge, are they only the folks that are RSVPing for the golf? Or, or can people separately walk in?
They need a tee time for entrance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, at this point, we'd like to defer to the board, um, for the vote. We just like to echo the fact that, um, this applicant has worked, um, really well with the neighbors and gained a lot of support letters, thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have letters of support, we also have one letter of opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan of the City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. As you know, Article sixty-eight went through an extensive community process, and the company's approach has been consistent. However, the council recognizes that their time, these variants have sought to be considered substantial hardship. Uh, therefore, he deferred the board's knowledge, uh, in interpreting zoning laws as it pertains to these hardships. And the council also likes to note that the establishment will be locally owned and add to the diversity of entertainment opportunities along Broadway. Most importantly, the council likes to stress that this, if it's approved, that the proponent continues to work closely with the neighbors to address quality of life concerns at each and every phase of the project.
Thank you, I do have one raised hand, Thomas, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thomas.
Hello? You unmuted yourself.
Uh, um.
Okay, go ahead, Thomas.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Thomas Regan, owner of Regan Motivated Fitness, located at three fifteen West Broadway in South Boston, calling to support. Uh, Danny Picard, because he's been a member of our gym for the last fifteen years and always showed in support to any event that we've, um, hosted for our community. Also, outside of that, I, I hosted free sports and conditioning camps for the youth of South Boston for over ten years, and for several of those years, Danny volunteered out of no monetary reason for his own, other than to help the community, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Can I, um, the next people, please talk about the proposal and the impact on the neighborhood? Are there any more raised hands?
Good mor-
Sorry.
Sorry, good, good morning, madam.
So Vanessa, you're coming in and out, you were coming in and out.
Okay, could, could you hear me better?
Yes.
Good morning, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Vanessa Wu from Counselor, uh, President Ed Flynn's office. Um, would like to vote in support of community process by the proponent and work with the neighbors and surrounding civic groups. Um, the proponent was able to, uh, treat any of those neighbors nearby, uh, from this location. We ask that the proponent continue to work closely with the community on issues that may arise during this process, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, did you take care of any, of everybody?
I'm there, one more raised hand that just came up, Ryan, can you go ahead? Hi, Ryan, I, go ahead.
Fourth Street, I live about, uh, six blocks down the street, just wanna call and support this project. Uh, I think it's a unique opportunity, uh, in this neighborhood, uh, I know Danny personally, I actually didn't know about this until yesterday. I received an email. I received an email and I just thought it was a great idea and I just wanted to call and support Danny in this endeavor. They're going to be a unique add to the neighborhood and I think the burdens will be minimal to the-
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Allegory's second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1270821, 123 Fisher Avenue. This is a two-family construction violation, Article 59, Section 3812. Two or more dwellings on the same lot, Article 59, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Fisher Avenue on.
Let's come back to it, please.
Where, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm here, I just, I couldn't find the unmute button.
Name and address for the record, please.
Margaret Coe, 129 Fisher Avenue.
Also, Richard Churidano, 129 Fisher Avenue, where the applicants, Andre Bernard, is our architect.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
We are proposing, we live on a large lot on Fisher Avenue, Mission Hill, which is a very steep slope. Our house is at the back of the hill. We are proposing to build a two-family house in front of our house, which we know is not a permitted use, in order to be able to stay on the property as we get older and not have to, right now, we carry everything up fifty-three steps to get to the house, including our bicycles. We bike a lot.
So let me just ask you, the existing building is, is what, a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family.
The existing building is a two-family and you're proposing a new two-family?
That is correct.
And what is the zoning district here?
Uh, Andres-
Three-family, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Is it three-family, two thousand, I believe?
Three-family, two thousand?
Yes.
And how large is your lot?
Approximately seven thousand.
Okay, and, let's see, and how large are the proposed unit sizes?
So there is a one-bedroom unit that is approximately seven hundred square feet. And then the other unit is about eighteen hundred square feet. Altogether, you know, including the stair that is in the middle, it's going to be about three thousand square feet, gross square footage.
So the new building will be three thousand square feet. How is parking going to be accommodated?
If you scroll up, there is parking right from Fisher Avenue. It would be essentially at, you know, at the level of the street.
Okay, and so you're proposing, is that garage parking? Yes, it is.
That's correct, yeah.
And is there parking on that side of the street on Fisher?
Yes, there is.
There is parking, so you will be taking two spaces off of the street with the proposed garages?
That's correct, and that's where the owners currently actually park.
Okay, okay, let's see, was there something else I was going to ask? Any proposed roof decks or anything like that?
There is a proposed roof deck, as you can see on the top floor, which would be the owner-occupied unit for Richard and Maggie. You can see it there. You zoom in on that sheet, it's sort of, you see the dining table, it's sort of page south of that.
And how is it, how is it arched?
It's a bit off, off the living area. It's not a roof deck.
Well, it's a terrace.
It's a terrace, okay. And so is, and are these, all these units, or this proposed two-bedroom unit handicapped accessible then?
They, they are not handicapped accessible. They would be on the residential building code. But we are making provisions on the main stairwell for, you know, aging in place, as that's part of, of, of the, you know, the idea for this project.
You know, so Place Taylor is the one doing the work here, proposed work here?
I, I am the architect and Place Taylor, yeah, the drawings were submitted as under Place Taylor, yes.
Well, I have to say, I was, in fact, just on Sunday, up on Highland Street in Roxbury, where the neighbors were very distressed about the work that Place Taylor did. Mr. Ehrlich, you know, it's the, it's the building behind the one on, on what, what is that street? That we were briefly talking about, that E-plus building?
Hmm, yeah.
It's kind of in the back of it and the, the residents were just talking to me very passionately about the work that Place Taylor does. It's, it's right behind Forty-two Hawthorne. It's kind of, that, one of a better word, a maroon building. And so, so can you tell us about your choice of Place Taylor as your, your architect?
Place, Place Taylor has, we first met Place Taylor when we went to an open house at a Net Zero building that they designed on Fort Hill. This was, oh my gosh, I don't know, seven years ago, maybe? And since then, they have designed several houses on Mission Hill in our neighborhood, all of which have been positively received by the neighbors. We chose them because they do design-build and we liked the idea of having an architect that was already in communication with the construction crew. And they do such energy-efficient buildings.
And how contextual is this building to those in Mission Hill?
It's actually, I would say, varied, in the sense that almost everything that's been built over the last ten years is a slightly more modern design. There's a fourteen-unit apartment building about a block and a half down on Fisher. Place Taylor actually designed two other properties on Fisher and Wesley, all with a very, very similar look. There are three, five, six townhouses next door to us, again, with a similar look.
We'll just say bye and beware. In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. You know, I think when you look at it in, in a overall site plan, it's a little, obviously, too housed on a lot. However, I think the topography is the real key here. It appears that, you know, the roof of the proposed addition is consistent with the other houses on that side, on the lower. I'm specifically thinking of 141, I believe it is, Fisher to the left. It feels like it fits in quite well with that. So, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with the proposal in terms of two units on, or two houses on a lot. I think it's, I think just the sheer topography creates this opportunity, low and not in conflict with the upper unit.
Got it.
Some other questions?
Any other questions from the board?
Just, just a reminder, what, what is the total lot size? I believe it's-
Seven thousand.
Six thousand, seven hundred something. Andres, can you blow that up, please?
That, that's correct.
Six thousand, one hundred square feet, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. But there was, in a butters meeting hosted by our office on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the applicants also did extensive community outreach and met with the Community Alliance of Mission Hill and also Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services and has received support from both of those organizations. I have also received eight letters of support from neighbors and at this time have received no letters of opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have those letters as well.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have three raised hands. I'll start with Gary. Gary, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm at ten Worthington Street in Mission Hill. I just wanted to say that as far as this project is concerned, I love the design. It's a terrific design that blends well with the neighborhood. I think it's totally appropriate for the site. And also that I'm happy to keep this, our neighbors here in our neighborhood for longer, so they'll be able to age in place and everything. So I support this project very much.
Thank you. And John, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? John Capola? Response from John, Adam, you've been unmuted? Hi, can you hear us?
John or Adam, please go ahead. We are ready to move.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Adam Sarbaugh, Mission Hill resident, Borg Member of Neighborhood Housing Services. We did have our formal vote last night, strongly in support of this proposal. Mission Hill undergoes a-
Thank, thank you very much. That's what we wanted to hear. Go ahead, the next person, Ms. Ambassador.
Hi, John, go ahead.
Good morning, this is John Capola, Three Darling Street, Boston. I have been a local resident and business owner for the past thirty years. I'd like to voice my support for Richard and Maggie and their proposed project at 123 Fisher Street. I agree with Eric on the topography. I think it does support the second building in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve with design, ordinarily reluctant to have two buildings on the same lot, but based on Mr. Robinson's comments, I make a motion to approve with the BPA Design Review.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please, Mr. Hampton, make sure that this gets a lot of attention because, you know, we've had experience, I guess, with, with Place Taylor that, that the way the feedback isn't, isn't, isn't so strong. So let's make sure that this is, this project works, okay?
Mister.
Okay, thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 1256895, thirteen Alexander Street. This is a change of occupancy to three-family dwelling, gut rehab. Violation to Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory uses, Article 50, Section 29, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 50, Section 20, 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yards insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yards insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, the location of off-street parking. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking design, maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Miguel Montero, thirteen Alexander Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts, zero two one two five.
So, Mr. Montero, tell us what you're proposing. Tell us about the size, what, what the current occupancy is and what the proposed occupancy is and the, the square, the square feet of each unit.
Okay, we are proposing to change it from one-family to three-family. The lot size, let's speak first about the, the size of this suite here is a three, four thousand. We are at, it's a row house, a four-floor row house. We are proposing to change it from one-family to three-family. One unit, the bottom unit, will, will have three floors, the basement, ground floor and first floor. That's about fifteen hundred square feet. The second floor unit will have about six fifty square feet and the third floor will have about six fifty square feet.
Okay, can we look at what that basement looks like? Can you tell us what sheet we should go to, to look at that basement?
Yes, it's one more, it will say basement, one minute. Okay, yes, this is the basement. The basement will have an internal stairway from the first floor, the first unit, going from the ground floor to the basement. It will also have a spiral stairs going down from the front of the building. And also in the rear of the basement, there is a window well with a stair going out to the rear of the building.
And what's the floor to sill height in that bedroom?
Seven and a half feet.
So from the floor to the sill is seven and a half feet?
Yes.
No, that's the ceiling height.
Okay, what's the floor to the bottom of the window?
The floor to the bottom of the window is about two and a half feet.
Twenty, it calls out twenty-seven inches. It looks like it's called out on the-
Mr. Robinson, how are the plans? And Mr. Ehrlich, please jump in.
I, I think the plans, you know, the plans are, are fine. It is showing it's a connected unit, it's not a separate unit in the basement. There are, looks like the full windows in the front. The rear does have an area well that they're providing windows for the rear bedroom. Not sure about the spiral staircase in the front, so I'm assuming the BPA will have a question about that, but-
But I'm also looking at this, the, at the top of the drawing, the rear, the spiral staircase there, and is that a deck? What, what, what is that, what are those windows looking out to?
The windows are looking out to the spiral. It is open. However, in front of it, there is the spiral fire exit for the units on the third and on the second floor.
Can, please, can we move up to the first floor plan? We looked at the basement. And where, where are the utilities?
The utilities are in the basement. At the front of the building, the utilities are in the room, in a separate room.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, Mr. Ehrlich, any questions related to that?
I remain perpetually frustrated by the lack of elevations. Are there none shown here?
There, there are some shown, sort of, a little earlier. There's some sort of section elevations where it's dashed. There you go, right there.
Okay, so, Mr. Robinson, what do we, what's our, what's my usual question in relation to the grade?
Yeah, so in, in the rear, it, it does call out, you can see they're providing an area well, right there in that rear section, to the back windows and then the front windows as well. So they're, they're doing the typical wells, except for in the front, they don't need to because the grade seems to drop off enough to manage that. They're at twenty-seven.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm reading it is it's like seven foot two from the floor to the grade?
In the back, yes.
And in the front, what? In the back is where the bedroom is.
There's one in the front and the back, yeah.
And, 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 and am I reading it right, is that if one exits that window, they walk against a three-foot alley to get to someplace else?
So there is, if you go to the first page, there, there is a site plan that shows some parking along, so the site is, the building or the site is much bigger than, this, this, I think it's a double lot, if you look at thirteen, so there is, there's a layout of the, of the first floor or the ground floor plan. I think it's down one page. There you go. You just went by it. Go up one, there. So you can see the building and it's, so I think it's a, a double lot, where parking is adjacent on the, on the right-hand side.
Yes, for now, but when that comes in for development, what will that mean?
I, this, yeah, this is great, yeah, great.
Mr. Robinson, what are you, I mean, it's pretty unusual to see the spiral staircase both front and back.
Yeah, I don't think, I, 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 I mean, I didn't see a BPA recommendation or maybe they haven't reviewed. I, I just don't think they're going to approve this. So, you know, I, I think if there's another way to manage it, maybe, but I think it's, it's going to, if that's what it's relying on, which it appears it is, I don't think it's going to actually ultimately work.
And is, is the project proponent reaching by having that bedroom in the basement?
Yes, of, of course.
Yes, okay. Is anybody, any other questions from the board? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes.
So we, we didn't get a copy of these plans until after our board had met, so we weren't able to make a recommendation on this. And I haven't talked to the planner about this at all, so hate to kicking it to the board for their decision on it, but...
Got it.
I intend to, Mr. Robinson, on the spiral staircase. Madam Chair, Secretary here. Mr. D'Amico has spoken this. I'd like to put his comments in for the record. Regarding Alexander Street, the design cannot accommodate six vehicles. Fifty percent must be eight and a half by tw- by 20. Also, the maneuverability cannot work under the design. He proposed the project be approved for three spaces and the location of the spaces be changed to safe maneuverability.
Okay. So is, thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Denise DeSantos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer to the board. The applicant did have a meeting on, a butters meeting on November 8th, as well as meeting with DSNI, and they have community, community support as well as direct support from, direct the butters. Thank you.
Do we have any elected officials that want to chime in before we open it up to the public? Just some messages. Hearing none, I also have no additional raised hands.
Um, so, let's see. Given that information and given our history with basement units and dwelling in the basement, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I, I gotta admit, I mean, sometimes what we do is we simply have a proviso not to have bedrooms in the basement, but this, this project is too problematic, I think, on multiple levels with the spiral staircases and the parking. I would just make a motion to design, to deny without prejudice, and they can come back with some better answers.
I, I, I will second that. Eric?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that is our decision, Mr. Montero. Please hire an adequate architect so that next time your plans are better reflective of, of occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:03. I'm going to call the 11 o'clock hearing for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you could give me the address first, if you are deferring or withdrawing, 11 o'clock case only.
421 Saratoga Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA 1242057, 421 Saratoga Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, once again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Dregel in Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. At this time, we are seeking to withdraw the application for 421 Saratoga Street.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 11 o'clock cases only?
Mr. Fortune, 26 Tilesboro Street?
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA 1272069, 26 Tilesboro Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Lot 75 Arlington Street in Boston. At this time, we are seeking a deferral as we are making changes to the plan with respect to the parking arrangement based upon additional feedback we've received, including from the BPA recommendation, and therefore the plans will be revised and we need to seek an updated refusal letter based on those changes. And therefore, we could deferral.
Motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Doc, I'll...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date, please.
We have the February 15th or March 8th. Mr. Lacasse, would suit you better if you still have to go back.
To be safe, let's go with the March date, please.
Okay, we're going to do March 8th at 12:30.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 11 o'clock cases? Give me the address, please. Hearing none, I'll go back to the 9:30, calling the next case, calling DOA 1273705, Yule Circle. This is a combined two lots and constructed six-family. Violations, Article 69, 69 insufficient lot size. Article 69, 69 insufficient lot width. Article 69, 69 insufficient lot frontage, width, frontage. Article 69, 69 excessive FAR. Article 69, 69, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 69, 69 insufficient open space. Article 69, Section 9 insufficient front yard setback. Article 69, Section 9 insufficient side yard setback. Article 69, Section 9 insufficient rear yard setback. Article 69, Section 29 insufficient parking. And Article 69, Section 8, six-unit dwelling MFR is provided. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci, an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Karen McKinney, the proposed developer of the site. The proposal is for a new six-unit apartment building with six off-street parking spaces to be located at 11 Yule Circle and rebuilt. Yule Circle is a private way with right of public access. The combined lot size would be 5,822 square feet. My client would be purchasing the site from the current owner, who also owns the abutting two-family dwelling at 7-9 Yule Circle and is therefore, of course, in support of this application. While the zoning here is 1F 6,000, it's a bit different from a typical 1F zone in that the site abuts northerly, on its northerly side, an industrial storage yard located on the Walcott Street side of the, of the property. And it's also approximately 150 feet from the Ponson Valley Parkway and about 50 feet from a local convenience sub-district. The six units would all be two-bedroom units. The sizes would be from unit one to unit six, 975 square feet, 1,005 square feet, 985 square feet, 865 square feet, 1,005 square feet, and 985 square feet. With respect to the zoning, the lot size here is 5,822 square feet. The lot frontage that's required is 60 feet. This site has frontage in lot width of 39 feet 11 inches. The minimum front yard setback depth is the modal or 25 feet. This setback would be approximately at the modal location of 20 feet on the Yule Circle side. There is a 10-foot side yard setback requirement on the left side of this site where there's a three-foot setback to be provided. That is the, the turnaround area where Yule Circle connects in the rear. So that is, the side yard there is actually Yule Circle and that private way. On the right side with this...
Hold on, Mr. Maranci, can you tell us which is the most appropriate drawing to be looking at so we can understand the impacts of the side and rear yards on the, on the abutting properties?
Certainly, if I was looking at my own zoning sheet, so perhaps if whoever's controlling the drawings scrolls up to this, this, this one and if the orientation were flipped clockwise. If scrolled down, there's a site plan on this site. I can, I can do it off of the site plan there, if that's zoomed in. On the right side is, in fact, Yule Circle. So the side yard setbacks to which I'm referring are, as the board is viewing these, this plan to the, on the, on the bottom, that is the left side setback. And on that side, you can see that is also part of Yule Circle, which is the private way. There is not an abutting dwelling on that left side setback. On the right side, where there's a three-foot setback, is the current owner's property at 7 to 9 Yule Circle, and that's a driveway area on that side of the, the right side. With respect to the, the rear setback, this is a block-through lot. This runs from Yule Circle to Yule Circle, which is a horseshoe-shaped private way. And the setback in the rear, because this is a block-through lot, that would be also required modal. The setback there is four feet 6 inches, which is the approximate modal on that side of Yule Circle. And because this is a 1F 6,000, 1,800 square feet per dwelling unit, of usable open spaces required, that's something that's really not met by anything in this particular section of the, the 1F zoning sub-district. This proposal would provide 775 square feet, mainly because there's no roof deck being proposed. And finally, in terms of the building height, the maximum height here is two and a half stories and 35 feet. This building would be only 32 and a half feet tall, but as a three-story building, there is an incurred violation for story height only. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions that the board may have.
And so, how many parking spaces are being provided?
Six parking spaces for the six units. The parking entry would be from Yule Circle through a garage door. The parking spaces would be partially enclosed and partially exposed on the right side of the site. There would be a privacy fence and bordering, landscape buffering around the exterior of the parking spaces. As the board is viewing the site plan from this angle, those parking spaces are arrayed one to six from the right to the left, including an ADA compatible space at the top of the site.
And this is an elevator building?
This, I have to look at my plans. Mr. Robinson might have that.
I just want to make sure that this is...
It, it is, it's not an elevator, it's, it doesn't appear to be an elevator building. It is calling out an ADA unit access point to unit one, which appears to be done through a lift of some sort from the main lobby.
Yes, a portion of unit one is located on the ground floor. That is actually, again, a portion of that unit.
Okay. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine. It's, it's, yeah, it took, thank you, Mr. Maranci, for the explanation. It was a little bit difficult for me to understand what was front yard, side yard, backyard, but thank you. I, I don't have any kind of questions about the, the plans themselves.
Okay, any questions from the board?
And just a comment that, that seems like, whether it's front yard, side yard or backyard, because it's a through lot, I get that, but regardless, it seems like a very, very minimal setbacks and very extensive lot coverage.
Well, understood. The, the, you know, the front, the setback in the front of Yule Circle is, is fully 20 feet. And there is considerable yard area to the, the left. Yule Circle, it has to be understood, it's a, it's a paper street, so it's not, it's not a private way. So the board probably doesn't have benefit of, of a landscape plan as I'm looking at it, but even with that minimum setback on the left side, everything to the left of the building is, 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 is green space. It's, it's all trees and grass. There is, Yule Circle doesn't connect, is my point. It is a paper street only. So while the site doesn't actually run, let's say, an additional 25 feet to the fence of the property, the rear of the properties on Walcott, the fact of the matter is there is about 25 feet of setback on the left side between, over 25 feet between the building and, in the rear of the properties on Walcott. So it's, you know, I'm not claiming that that is a full setback. It's not owned, the fee isn't in the ownership of this land, but it's there. It's not a continuation of Yule Circle. It is in fact open space. And finally, on the rear side, which is also on Yule Circle, the, the other leg of Yule Circle, that four-and-a-half-foot setback is approximately the setback that we also see from the building at 214 Ponson Valley Parkway. There are only, there are only two other buildings on the, the rear side of this, of this lot, on, on the Yule, Yule Circle side. One at 17, and the separation distance there...
Mr. Maranci?
I'm sorry?
No, I just want to interject that, in fact, with, with Mr. Olick's question is that, in fact, Yule might be a paper street today, but the way construction and development is going, you know, we, we need to just be a little bit forward-thinking in our review of these projects and kind of think through what the ramifications will be long-term of approval of these projects. So that's kind of where we're going. So I, we understand what you're saying. We understand what current situations are, but I think we need to also recognize that these buildings will be usable and occupiable for the next 40, 50 years, long before we're gone. So we do need to recognize that. So thank you.
It's understood, but, but, but as from a legal perspective...
Hang on, Mr. Maranci, I, I want to shift the question, which is about context. I don't really, I mean, I know the Ponson Valley Parkway is a pretty heavily trafficked street and has some multi-unit, but this is a 1F district, right?
It's a 1F 6,000, yes.
And you're putting six units on Yule Circle, which is not in the Ponson Valley Parkway? I mean, that...
No, I...
So my question, it has to do with context. Is this really kind of going to stick out like a sore thumb?
The, the, I understand the concern. I mean, the building size itself is, is, you know, not anomalous for the area. The building at the corner of this side of Yule Circle in Ponson Valley Parkway, 208 Ponson Valley Parkway, is a seven-unit apartment building. It is zoned LC. It is not, it is not zoned 1F, but that's why I was talking about the proximity of these two zoning sub-districts as they border one another. And actually, they built...
It's apples and oranges. You're talking about a private way that's a circle that's off a main, a main drag. And I don't think you can, you should be mixing the zoning expectations for a main thoroughfare as opposed to a quiet private circle.
Okay, so after that statement, can I...
It's going differently.
Yeah. Go ahead, hold on, Mr. Olick. Let's, let's just quickly get comments. Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, I have, oh, I do have one raised hand. It's the caller, 617364.
Madam Chair, the secretary here, we do have two letters of opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, caller 18, can you, I sent a request to unmute yourself. Are you still looking to get, okay, there you go. Go ahead, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Craig Martin, Eco Chester Street in Reedville.
Go ahead.
A couple of matters. I'm glad, I'm, I'm brought, the board member, I'm brought up the tension that it's two different zoning districts, but the council was inappropriately comparing it to a commercial zone to this neighborhood zone. Indeed, this parcel is too small for a single family, which is an insult to the neighborhood. And I'll bring up the matter that the two abutters on Yule Circle, who we were told by the council had been properly informed and that they were all done ho about it. I went to those two abutters fairly recently. I mean, they had no knowledge of this project at all and were just dismayed and disgusted that this would be right in front of them, the two Yule Circle abutters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving us a sense of what's going on. Any other, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Uh, no ma'am, no one.
Madam Chair, this is Danielle Fonseca from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Can I speak on the community process?
Yes, because we understand that, yes, because you did conduct the community process. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we will be deferring our judgment to the board, but during the community process, the applicants notified immediate abutters and a community meeting was hosted by our office on July 14th of 2021. There was one person in attendance at this meeting and they had concerns regarding parking, density and the congestion of the area with the addition of these units. The applicants also connected with the local neighborhood group, which is the Reedville Watch, and an in-person meeting was held on November 18th of 2021. Many residents were fairly neutral on this project itself. They just brought up concerns around developers and applicants notifying the community of a proposal in general. They also, the applicants took an additional step and connected with the High Park Neighborhood Association. And during their meeting, which was conducted on September 9th, there were some concerns about the potential loss of trees on-site, in addition to the project having some dimensional and other violations of the High Park Neighborhood Plan. So our office has received one letter of opposition, and that is from the High Park Neighborhood Association, and this has... Neighborhood Association, and this has also been sent to the board for review. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Royal's office. We just want to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Um, nope. Any other elected officials? I think we're all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so given the array of information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think there's, I think it's, it's a little, it's an oversized project.
It's, and I did, I, I did, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric. I think it, I think it's also too dense for the edge of, where it is on the street.
And I'm, I did neglect to call the BPDA, because they have, they have recommendations too.
Yes, Madam Chair, we recommend straight denial on this. It's just the massive, it's too big, too big for the scale.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
On the last case, the 9:30, calling BOA 126-9775, 2034 to 2044 Center Street. This is the removal of the proviso for this petitioner only. The violation is Article 6, Section 4. Other protectional conditions. Name and address. Pull the record, please. Is anybody on for 2034, 2044 Center Street, West Roxbury?
Oh, yes, hold on, I see that name. Joe Dinger, you're on. Can you unmute yourself? I just made you a panelist. Uh, yes, go ahead.
Hi. Good morning, respected chair members. This is Jovindha Sahani. The address is 2034, 2044 Center Street, West Roxbury.
So, Ms. Sahani, tell us what you're planning on doing and what the proposal is.
I am not, I just bought this business only from the previous owner, and nothing is changing, I'm not changing anything except the name of the owner, which will be now 2040 Central Inc.
So what is the business?
It's a pizza place, sitting at takeout.
Okay.
Pizza place and subs.
And so, do you have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Uh, yes, I do have, and my brother is also been working there for a long time, so he's, and I am not. His whole staff is the same, same manager, and one more family member I'm adding besides me, which is my sister-in-law, and only staff change is to one of the owner.
What, what is the name of the pizza place?
It's Dino's Pizza and Subs.
Okay. Okay, um, any, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, no questions, and as the proponent said, no changes. It looks like it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to defer to the board's judgment. Previously, this proposal had been before the board in 2016, I believe, received support. Due to the minimal changes, a limited community process was conducted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have electeds who are looking to give testimony before we open it up to the public?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Attorney, Michael Clarity. Due to the minimal change here, council will record and support.
I have no raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for this applicant only, but the usual takeout language.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is now 11:25. We're going to take a five-minute break and just proceed with the 11 o'clocks.
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think there's, I think it's, it's a little, it's an oversized project.
And I did, I, I did, is there a second?
I'll second that, Eric. I think it, I think it's also too dense for the edge of, where it is on the street.
And I'm, I did neglect to call the BPDA, because they have, they have recommendations too.
Yes, Madam Chair, we recommend straight denial on this. It's just the massive, it's too big, too big for the scale.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
On the last case, the 9:30, calling BOA 126-9775, 2034 to 2044 Center Street. This is seeking to change the occupancy for this petitioner only. The violation is Article 6, Section 4. Other protectional conditions. Name and address. Pull the record, please.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support, but we have one letter of opposition. The opposition is about parking.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands in the attendees section, but are there any electeds that are on that are looking to speak?
Madam Chair, we just lost Mr. Robinson. I don't know if he came back.
No raised hands on my side. Thank you.
Just lost him after I spoke, so.
Can you hear me now? I'm back.
Okay.
I didn't think I went anywhere, but thank you, Mr. Fortune.
So we are, we have a full board. We are ready for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Jeff, do you need, do you want to design review?
I know I say it in my vote, but I'll, you know, I don't leave it to Eric.
I don't think so. I think it's, it's very straightforward. I, I don't think it's needed.
Just a, motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And please, to the architect, who we've been seeing a lot of this morning, can you look at options for spiral staircases? Because I know some people have difficulties with those spiral staircases, and we just want to make, make it easier on people, on residents, without having those in their buildings. Okay, the next case?
Next case, calling BOA 124-2046, 3046. Uh, just to go over the violations, if I could, uh, there are only two. So point eight is what's required for FAR. We're proposing one point O. And because we're keeping the building, we can't create any parking. There's none now. We're not taking anything away, but, uh, we would trigger a parking violation. Uh, I can pause with any questions for the board.
You know, today, I have to say, is the first day in a very, very, very long time we've seen spiral staircases. Um, so just to put that on the record. Um, in the meantime, how are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
The, the plans are good. I, and I can confirm that the rear, uh, elevation is fully exposed on the lower level and there is no bedroom shown, um, in the basement or in the lower level. Um, just the office and media room.
Thank you.
No, no other questions. Thanks.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. I'll give some background information on the community process. Uh, we heard from the liaison that conducted it that they received overwhelmingly positive feedback from Butters. Um, they also received support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association, and our office received three letters of support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support, but we have one letter of opposition. The opposition is about parking.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands in the attendees section, but are there any electeds that are on that are looking to speak?
Madam Chair, we just lost Mr. Robinson. I don't know if he came back.
No raised hands on my side. Thank you.
Just lost him after I spoke, so.
Can you hear me now? I'm back.
Okay.
I didn't think I went anywhere, but thank you, Mr. Fortune.
So we are, we have a full board. We are ready for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve. Um, Jeff, do you need, do you want to design review?
Uh, I know I say it in my vote, but I'll, you know, I don't leave it to Eric.
I don't think so. I think it's, it's very straightforward. I, I, I don't think it's needed.
I, may, just a straight motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And please, to the architect, who we've been seeing a lot of this morning, um, can you s- look at options for spiral staircases? Uh, because I know some people have difficulties with those spiral staircases, and we just want to make, uh, make it easier on peop- on residents without having those in their buildings. Okay, the next case?
Thank you.
Uh, next case, calling DOA one-two-four-two-zero-four-six-three-six-two Sumner Street. This is to confirm occupancy of a one-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling and also extend living space into the basement, directly a third-story and rare additions and renovate. Violation Article twenty-seven T dash five. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-two, structure restriction. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago at Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, uh, representing Stan Klebner from Odessa Capital, uh, as the owner and developer. And we also have Adam Glassman, who's the architect on the project. Uh, a- as was mentioned, we are seeking to change the occupancy from a one-family residential dwelling to a three-family residential dwelling, but keeping the building. Uh, we're proposing to completely renovate the building and add a rear and third-story addition to match which building, uh, to the, directly connected to us on the right. Um, this particular zoning sub-district is in a three-F two thousand. Our lot size is twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, just to go over, um, the unit layout. So there's a pretty extensive drop, uh, grade change uh, that you can see in this building. That's a, that's a good picture of it. Um, and so in our lower level, we are proposing living space. Uh, we have nine-foot-nine-inch ceiling height, a complete walkout in the rear. We have thirty-four-inch floor, uh, two-sill, um, size for egress. We have office, laundry, a bathroom and living area that we're proposing down in the lower level, and that would be connected to the first floor, uh, that would have three bedrooms and two baths with a rear deck. Uh, that unit total would be seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet. Um, the second floor, as we go up, would house an eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot two-bedroom, two-bath with a rear deck. And the third floor, uh, would house unit three with nine-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot two-bedroom, two-bath, uh, with a rear deck as well. Um, a- as was mentioned, you could see in, uh, rendering in the back, uh, we are adding, uh, a third-floor addition, uh, but keeping, um, the contours to match, uh, the building right there to the right of us. Um, there's also a passageway on the left-hand side, um, that folks can use as egress. Um, it's about seven feet, uh, in length. Um, just to go over the violations as well. So, uh, additional lot area required would be two thousand. We have fifteen-hundred square feet. Uh, we're slightly over in the required height, three stories, thirty-five feet. We are at three stories, but we're at thirty-six feet, six inches with our top floor addition. Um, we are, uh, on the left side because we're keeping the building. So pre-existing, we do have a left-side violation at zero, but there is that passageway. Um, and we're attached on the right side. Uh, front yard, we're matching. We're not changing the building, so that's pre-existing. We're modal. But there is a five-foot front yard environment, uh, so we would need relief from that from the board. Uh, roof structure restriction because we are adding, uh, another level. And then we're, because we're keeping the building, we cannot create any parking, so we do have a parking violation as well. Um, we can pause, answer.
So, so Cam, so does the access to the first floor and lower level? Is it through the front door? Is it through the rear door? How is it?
Correct. Through the front door, but you can also walk right in through the rear door by using the passageway around the back.
Okay, and what's the rear yard again?
We have a fourth, one-foot rear setback and forty is required. So we have, and we're making that all-new green space.
Okay. Um, now, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, plans are good. I think the proposed street, uh, changes as meant long will be, uh, consistent with it. The, the rear is pushing out further, um, in terms of obviously the addition, uh, adjac- uh, compared to the adjacent existing buildings. But I think it's, um, generally within the context of, uh, the rear yards.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Uh, I will have some background information on the community process. Um, the applicant worked closely with the Jeffreys Point Neighborhood Association, uh, making a number of concessions and compromises. Uh, the Jeffreys Point Neighborhood Association eventually voted to support the proposal, uh, citing that the height was in line with other surrounding buildings in the area, as well as a shadow study that was conducted demonstrating that it wouldn't have a negative impact on the neighborhood. We also have seven letters of support as well from the Butters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no.
Madam.
Go ahead.
Madam, sorry, Madam Chair, uh, I do have, uh, four letters.
And I have no raised hands right now, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-four-six-zero-nine-eight-one-fourteen Prince Street. This is a proposed amendment is to turn the currently finished basement space into legal living space for unit one and roughly five-hundred square feet of the fourth-floor addition with deck access from the fourth-floor living space. Violation Article fifty-four, section eighteen, roof structure building height restrictions penthouse. Article fifty-four, section ten, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-four, section ten, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I see a raised hand. Greg, are you here for this case? Greg McCarthy been unmuted?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
How are you? Uh, this is Greg McCarthy for one-fourteen Prince Street. Um, do I need to get the video? Okay, video. Okay, perfect. Thank you for having me, everybody. Um.
Can you, please speak through what's being proposed so we can get a solid understanding? Uh, please note that the, uh, that the, um, BPDA has recommended against bedrooms in the basement. Um, but in the meantime, talk about the rest of the building.
Sure. Yeah, so it's a, uh, existing three-story building or three-and-a-half-story building. The, the ground levels, uh, actually both above, uh, what we purchased this building, it was a three-family with a, uh, would turn out to be an illegal unit in the basement. Um, so we're actually proposing, um, it's more of a garden level than a basement. It's actually full walkout in the back and in on the front.
Are you proposing three units or four units?
So we're actually proposing to combine that, uh, garden-level unit with the first floor. So we'll, we'll be three units now.
Okay. And tell us about the sizes of the units?
Sure. So the first floor, uh, the first floor and garden-level unit is about sixteen-hundred square feet. The second-floor unit is about eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Uh, and then the third-floor unit, we're also proposing, uh, so this is one of the only three-story buildings of a block. It's, uh, surrounded by mostly four-story buildings. Um, four-story buildings are on either side of it. Um, and the current building height is thirty-two feet. The allowing to this neighborhood is fifty-five. So we're actually proposing to put a, uh, fourth, uh, fourth-story addition on top of it, which would be a roughly, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet addition, addition on the, on the floor. Um, that should be a little bit down in the plans.
What would make that, what would be then the size of that third unit?
That would make this third unit about fourteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Okay. Um, how, how are the plans, um, um, Mr. Robinson? Oh, can, can whoever has the, uh, audio on mute. Um.
Plans are, plans are good. I think, I, plans are good. I think the, the fourth-floor addition, I, I think it is consistent with the street. They're actually pulling it back and creating sort of an outdoor terrace there. I think that's, that's fine. Um, I guess I had a question, just so I can make sure I understood. On the lower level, um, there, there's no sections or, but, so I, I see, it appears that you kind of can get to the lower level from the street by going down a couple steps. Um, is that, is that intended as an entrance or is that a, I, I guess I'm a little confused if that's, because you're saying it's part of the other unit, but is that, does that need to be a separate entrance?
That, that, that's an existing door.
Okay, and you're leaving it?
All, all of these doors on the front are existing, so we, we're able to keep one for the utility. Um, this one, we're pointing on keep, but keeping, but you also enter unit one from the, from the main entrance. So it's kind of just another egress for unit, unit one.
Okay, and then, and, but the rear, the site, I mean, it's, I don't have any site information, but it looks like the site is fully a walkout in the rear. Just want to confirm that.
Yeah, there's an alleyway between, uh, behind it.
Behind, okay. Um, I have no questions except for, I guess, maybe Mr. Hampton can speak to their, uh, recommendation on the, uh, on that.
Let's wait a moment. Let's wait a moment. Any, any questions from the board? Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
This is the board. This is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant had come in front of the North End Neighbor, the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, the North End Waterfront Residents Association, and also held in a Butters meeting on this project, that received support from both, uh, organizations in the neighborhood. And at this time, we'd like to defer to judgment of the board.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have a couple of letters of support.
Okay, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, our concern is just a, a bedroom with the coastal flip zillency overlay that was just put into place. Um, so we would just recommend the, recommend that, that bed would be put, taken out. That's all.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I, I would, I'll make a motion to approve, um, with the proviso to remove the bedroom from the lower level. Um, and BPDA design review.
I'll second that.
Is there a, a second? Oh, oh, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-four-five-three-four-nine-four-sixty-eight Commonwealth Avenue. This is to remove the proviso granted to the previous petitioner, owner, to change to new owner, violate Article six, section four, other conditions necessary for protection. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, he's on. Give me one second. Uh, Ahmed, go ahead. I just made you a panelist so you can unmute yourself. Can you hear? Oh, go ahead. All right.
Hello, my name is Ahmed Mahmoud, four-sixty-eight Commonwealth Avenue, Boston.
So tell us, uh, what's the name of your restaurant and if you have previous experience in, uh, takeout?
Yes, it is, uh, it's called Bab Al Yaman. Uh, I have had an extensive, uh, experience in the last six years.
Have you been running this restaurant?
I have been running this restaurant.
Okay, and the name of the restaurant again?
Bab Al Yaman.
Okay. Okay. Um, how are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine. Appears there's no, no change and, and the layout looks to be consistent with what was there, so no questions.
Okay. Um, any questions from the rest of the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. We did host in a Butters meeting on November twenty-second, um, and the applicant also met with the Kenmore Business Association and the Kenmore Residence Group. Um, no concerns have been raised from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Council to go and record and support.
Madam Chair, I do see a raised hand from Adam. I'm sorry, give me. Oh, Adam, are you all set? You can unmute yourself. Adam, are you all set?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Adam Barnas, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I was trying, trying to get on a few moments ago, but, uh, didn't know what comments were.
Um, Ms., Ms. Ambassador, is anybody else from the district councilor's office on? Because I don't know everybody.
Well, I think Yafande was sending me some messages. Are they, uh, any other elected officials that would like to chime in? I think we're good to go there.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for this applicant only with the usual takeout language.
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling DOA one-two-four-seven-eight-six-seven-sixty-eight Nazing Street. Companion case, building code, DOA one-two-four-seven-eight-seven-two-sixty-eight Nazing Street. This is for sixty-eight, amazing, add an exterior dormers to the third-floor unit and extend living space. Violation Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, side yard is insufficient. This is for the building code. Building code violations, the ninth edition, seven-eighty CMR, exterior walls, seven-on-five-point-eight, open-in in exterior walls. The new opening less than five feet from the lot line, any non-sprinkled building. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith of KDS Law, business address of three-five-nine Newbury Street in Boston Back Bay.
So, um, Mr. Smith, tell us what's being, uh, since you have a building code violation, can you speak to that first?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, so we have a pre-existing structure. Uh, the proposed plans are to expand the square footage on the third floor by adding two dormers in the darkened area that you saw on the first cover page, um, thereby increasing the aggregate square footage approximately for top floor of about four-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet. On the right side, we have a existing.
So are you talking about the exterior walls and the openings?
Um, yes, so on the right side of the structure, as you're facing it, we have a pre-existing non-conformity where we have a, um, structure facade that is within five feet of a lot line. The intent is to add a window on that dormer, on that facade of the structure. And since we are located too close to a lot line, there are then fire code-related concerns. So this has been, uh, addressed with the current owner. We know that it has to have certain applicable fire ratings and will be inoperable to satisfy fire code requirements. So the plan is to address that as part of the building code issuance. So that is what is triggering that, uh, building code violation.
So the question then is, from what you're saying, that you are going to meet building codes requirements and you do not need the relief?
Uh, yes, our intent is to satisfy those requirements.
So may I have a motion then on the building code?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Second, Eric.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So please tell us about the proposal now.
Sure. Um, so I elaborated briefly on the intent to add, uh, two dormers, both on the left side and right side of the structure. Um, the intent is to increase the aggregate square footage of the third floor by approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, uh, thereby converting it from a one-bed to a, uh, and one-bath to a two-bed and one-bath. Uh, current existing FAR is approximately a point nine-two with a maximum allowable of point nine, I believe. Uh, the intended FAR, uh, if the, uh, proposed package is approved, will become a one-point-zero-zero. So the darkened areas on the slide before this indicate the locations of the intended, uh, dormers and the expanded square footage. Uh, there'll be some kind of retooling of the interior layout of that, uh, third floor.
So this is a three-family and it's going to continue to be a three-family?
Correct. Um, if it's relevant to the board, we did have a community meeting that was led by DNS.
Now, just from, just, uh, we'll leave that to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. But can you tell us then what is the square foot, the completed, proposed completed square foot for that top unit?
Um, yes. Um, yes. Um, actually, Madam Chair, I, in full disclosure, I was retained, the, um, proponent only hired an architect to get us to that current, uh, iteration of plans and not carry us through it. So I don't have the current existing F, uh, square footage of the top floor. I only know the aggregate increase of the top floors are being approximately four hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Okay, okay, and, um, do you know if there's any occupancy in the basement?
Uh, there is not currently, no.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, I think it's, it's fairly straightforward, just looking to, uh, increase this, the usable space on, in the attic, in the upper floor, no questions.
Thank you, is anybody, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We'd like to highlight that the butters meeting was held on November fourth in which Garrison Charter Housing Committee and also Mike Coles will project right, we're in attendance with a additional meeting to the Garrison Charter Housing Committee as well. We are going to be deferring to the expertise of the board, but I did want to highlight that the community process was completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Coles, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, this is Michael Coles from Project Right, three twenty-eight Blue Hill Avenue. Uh, this is an owner-occupied project and we support it.
Thank you. See no additional raised hands at the moment.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
What, did you, design review, Eric?
I don't think so, I think they're just very straightforward dormers, I think it's.
Okay, um, it, so there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set with that, uh, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the last case, calling DOA 127-0390-19-Harrison Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family, the dormers are already built, a third-floor kitchen has been added. Violations Article Sixty-seven, Section Thirty-two, off-street parking is insufficient. Article Sixty-seven, Section Eight, the three-family dwelling use is forbidden. And Article Sixty-seven, Section Nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Kyle Smith with KDS Law, business address of three five nine Newbury Street in Boston Back Bay.
So is this a project where somebody's built and now coming in for forgiveness? Or, um, or can you talk this through for us?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, so, uh, the answer to your question is yes. Um, I actually happened to reside at the time at the Dale Village, um, we were aware of construction occurring here. I was not retained until, uh, after they tried to obtain lawful occupancy for a third floor that had been created as a individual, a, a visible unit. Um, so it had been approved for a two-unit structure with the second and third floor being contiguous. Um, you know, in, in full disclosure, the, there was a person that was building this property, they had money issues, they were then foreclosed upon by their lender, their lender took over the project and then developed it themselves and then sold the project mid-construction to a end-third person, uh, and that caused confusion. Uh, and in the end, a third kitchen was added on the third floor. Uh, there is not currently sprinkling in the building as is required. Um, so from my prior expertise or prior experiences, I would say that this was not necessarily, or was not certainly done correctly in, in, uh, current protocol. Um, but we are trying to, uh, in the end legalize this third unit, uh, that is currently existing. Uh, if it is so approved, it would then require the current owner to then sprinkler the building as well. So they are aware of the current physical deficiencies in the building, but yes, we are trying to legalize a unit that is currently in existence.
Okay, so tell us about, um, is there any basement occupancy?
Uh, there is not currently, it is just all mechanical and storage for the three units.
And tell us about the sizes of each unit.
Uh, sizes of units are, Madam Chair. Uh, the first floor unit uh, is I apologize, Madam Chair, I also, again, don't have an architect available to me and I don't have the, um,
Well, maybe, maybe we should.
Available.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, can you help?
I could try. I mean, it appears to be probably around a thousand square foot per floor, or plus or minus, maybe a little bit more. Um, so I, I would say each unit is in the nine-hundreds, they're, 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 they're reasonable-sized units. Bedrooms look fair-sized at eleven and, and ten and a half, um, yeah, I think it's, it's, I see where the issue is here, but bedrooms.
And Madam Chair, affirmatively, the third floor, uh, which is the subject unit in question, uh, in aggregate is supposed to be approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, and how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The, the plans are fine, I think the, the council has pointed out, I, I, obviously the hurdle of going from a two to a three and some of the building code issues, which I, I appreciate him acknowledging and, and I think, uh, you know, if this is to go forward, we should certainly, uh, put no building code relief on it, um, as a proviso. No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, my name is Udrin, O Chief of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. However, we did hold a community meeting on October twenty-sixth for this proposal.
And how, tell us anything that happened at the community meeting?
I mean, it went fine, we didn't get any letters of support or opposition, so.
Okay, thank you. Any elected officials on, Ms., um, Ambassador?
Okay, now that I can see, but is anyone else, um, from elected's office looking to give testimony? I have no raised hands other than that. The girls.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with, uh, the proviso of, of no building code relief, um, to be great.
Thank you, is there a second?
Not good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so you're all set with that proviso, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The meeting is now adjourned until twelve-thirty.
The board meeting, the zoning board of a meeting, meeting for January 11th is now in session. Mr. Fortune, can we proceed, please?
My pleasure, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call the 12:30 rediscussions. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 12:30 cases?
Good afternoon, Mr. Fortune.
Yes.
That's John Pulgeni, 60 Stanley Street.
Thank you, Mr. Pulgeni. Calling case BOA 116-6627, 60 Stanley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. We're asking for a deferral. This came before the board a while back. It didn't complete the hearing. The board had suggested some changes and suggested that we defer. We have, we redrew the plans, went out to the community, and then filed those plans with ISD. And we're just waiting for the updated refusal letter.
And are we still down to eight residential units?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Well, we do have some dates in February, but I think we'll be safe and wait till March 8th at 12:30.
Sir, Fortune, we should have it back. They, I mean, I think we're missing it by days to be cut out. But whatever fits your schedule.
No, that's fine. We can get you in on February 15th at 12:30.
Thank you very much. Everyone have a good day.
Okay, see you then.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30? Is 20 Center Street on? That's being deferred for re-advertising?
I'm also seeing 55 Bowden. I'm asking.
Are they deferring?
Yes, it says 55 Bowden is deferring.
Okay, is 55 Bowden on?
I'm getting a message from Gabriel.
Okay, I'm gonna call in into the record then. Calling BOA 120-2529, 55 Bowden Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Gabriel, can you unmute yourself? I don't see you on the. Second, okay, I'm sorry. Had to refresh my screen. Okay, Gabriel, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, Gabriel Martin Jenkins, co-owner of the property, 55 Bowden Ave. We would like to defer.
And why, why are you deferring? This is a, is this a second or a third request for a deferral?
I believe it's the second request for a deferral.
Okay, so.
The, there's one single change being made to the plans and we just need to finalize that.
Okay, and it's still a proposal to, to change it from a two to a three family?
Yes, it is.
And hopefully there's no basement unit being proposed, or basement living?
No, basement unit is one of the units being added, or being cha, it's a change of the main floor and the basement level, which are already one unit into two units.
Hmm, okay. Okay, I suppose we'll have that conversation another day. May I have a motion for?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Well, we can do 3/8, I'm sorry, on March 8th at 12:30.
That sounds perfect.
See you then.
And Madam Ambassador, is 20 Center Street on? Because we do have it down that they're gonna, they refuse the letter for re-advertising.
Don't see them, just.
So before we go back and leave, it's 12, 12:30 in March 8th, correct?
Correct.
That's correct, 12:30.
Thank you very much.
And I don't see Michael Chatter, he's the applicant on file, I don't see his name.
Okay, well, I'll call the, I'll call the case, the first case here. Calling BOA 121-1702, 95 to 97 Broadway Street. This is a change of office, the office of two residential units, constructing new partial second floor and third floor addition. Violation Article 32, Section 4, this is G card applicability. Article 63, Section 20, the roof structure restriction. Article 63, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 63, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, attorney for the applicant. Happy New Year to you all. I'm also joined by Henrietta Mee, the architect. She's on the call with me today. This is a.
Hold on, hold on, Counselor. Is Christian on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Happy New Year to you and the board.
To you too.
Thank you. Christian Seminale, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the Boston Water and Sewer Approval and No Harm Letters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms., Counselor Ross.
Madam Chair, we have the letter as well.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Ross, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an existing office use, a rear office use in the multifamily residential section of Bay Village. And our plan is to add two residential units to floors two and three of the existing building. And so that, that triggers, as a result of the two additional units, that triggers an FAR increase of from 1.9 to 2.7. This is a 2.0, this is a good screen right here, actually, Madam Ambassador, to hover on for the moment. That triggers the FAR violation. We're adding about 4,800 square feet. That's in the purple, you can see. That's the new, net new part of the building. It also triggers the rear yard violation. We're not adding to the rear yard violation, but we are building within the 12 feet that compose the rear yard setback. So for that, for that reason, we have a variance for rear yard. This is in a area that a roof restrict, a roof deck requires a conditional use.
Hold on, Counselor, please. So the office is still going to be on the ground floor? How many square feet is that?
The office is around, just under 11,000 square feet.
11, 11,000 square feet, okay. And the two residential units, what are they? One bedroom, two bedrooms? And how many square feet are they proposed?
Yep. Unit two is on the second floor and unit one is on the third floor. They're both two-bedroom units. Unit two is on the second floor, is the smaller of the two. That's 2,005 square feet approximately. That's a two-bed. And then unit one takes the entire third floor. That's a larger unit. That's 3,900 square feet. And that's also a two-bedroom. And it's that unit three, it's that unit one on the third floor that has the direct access to the roof, which triggers the roof restriction in this part of the Bay Village, which requires a conditional use permit.
Okay, and tell us about the roof deck. How large is it? And it's only accessible to unit one? How large is it? And what, how is it accessed?
Yeah, you can go to A104 to get a better vantage of the roof deck. I have a square footage here of, you're around 580 square feet. And it is accessible directly to unit one, which is the third floor, which is, you know, the top floor, only singular unit that would have access to it. You see the gray there, Madam Chair, on the left side of your screen? That's the, that's the, that's the roof deck. It's just for that portion. The rest are mechanicals that are on the roof.
Okay, and how is that deck, roof deck accessed?
It's accessed by a stair into a hatch. The, the building owner immediately went to a hatch-like entry to remove any kind of headhouse instructions on account of neighbors, et cetera.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The, excuse me, the plans are good. I think it's actually a very nice addition that'll fit in nicely with the existing building, as well as the context on the street. I really have no questions about the proposed project.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Cruciolis from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed the thorough community process and also met with the Bay Village Neighborhood Association. There is no opposition from the abutters. At this time, our office respectfully defers to the board on this matter. Thank you.
I don't try to have no raised hands at the moment.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Vanessa from Counselor Ed Flynn's office. Would also like to go on record and support based on feedback from neighbors and the Bay Village Neighborhood Association, who indicated that not opposed to the project. Thank you.
I'm sorry, they indicated they will oppose the project? I'm sorry, Vanessa, what did you say? Oppose?
Unopposed, not opposed.
Okay, cool, thank you. Is Anna on vacation, or is this your new permanent post? Okay, cool, thank you. Is Anna on vacation, or is this your new permanent post?
Anna, yes, Anna is taking some time off at the moment, so I'm standing in place for her.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Oh, yep, I do see a hand raised. Joan, I requested to have you on the... Okay, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
And Joan Konak in Abutter at 6 Melrose Street. And I just wanted to say that after a thorough process and many meetings between Mei Chi and the neighbors, including myself, that we do not oppose the project and are in support of what she's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Mr. Counsel, that last Michael Flaherty conduct for a record and support.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPD design review.
I'll second that.
It's in a landmark district.
Yeah.
Okay, right, got it.
I won't second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries you all. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the last case here for Center Street. They are supposed to re-advertise, so I'm going to make a motion for deferral, then give a date, but I'm going to call it to the record. Case BOA 117-5371, 20 Center Street. I don't believe they're on, Madam Ambassador, correct?
No, I don't see the name here.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. I'll second the motion, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The date, please.
They're going to have a date of March 8th at 12:30.
Excellent.
That concludes that.
Michael Saunders is on. He's in the attendee section.
Is he in the attendee section? Oh, he must have jumped on, okay. All right, he's on.
Michael, Michael, so you've heard that we've deferred this to March 8th at 12:30, right?
Mike, I made you a panelist.
Mike Chavez?
He did send me a message in the chat just now.
I, I just...
Did he hear us? He might be having some connectivity issues.
Okay, I just want to make sure he knows, so that we can expect to see him in March. Okay, Jason, will you be in touch with him to confirm, please?
Yes, I will. I'll relay the information, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. So the meeting is now adjourned. May I just have the board members and staff stay on for about five minutes?